I know it does, the whole, I never really bought one, I think.
Alright, are we live? Okay, alright, good evening, gonna call the meeting to order for tonight's workshop. Um, as we do, would everyone please join me for the lunch? Do you have your, your choice?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are here tonight for the purpose of workshop, this is not a business meeting, we have no voting agenda items. Uh, just a quick review of upcoming meetings. We will have a July ninth, next week, Finance Committee meeting at five thirty here, that will be in the high school library. July sixteenth, we will have a School Board Business Meeting at six thirty, the place is to be determined.
We're working on it.
Uh, we will publish that. And then July twenty-fourth will be our Town Budget Validation Meeting at six, I believe we were gonna do registration starting at five thirty. Um, so doors open at five thirty, and we will be back here at the high school cafeteria. Um, as this is a workshop with a specific agenda, I would ask for comments from the audience. Um, and request they be specific to tonight's, um, topic. Do we have any comments from the audience? You sure? Alright. Um, so all business is, um, to hear an update on the budget, actually before we get into the purpose of tonight's workshop. Um, I do some quick housekeeping, um, I thought we would have po- possibly more folks, but we don't. Um, but for those watching along at home, please be sure to speak into your microphones. Um, some of them, I've experimentally set up on the side of you instead of in front of you, it seems to catch with less having to do this. Um, but in this space in particular, it's really important that everyone can be heard. And, oh, and we have with us tonight Jen Gagnon and David Pascal from Central Office. Um, in their roles as administrators for the district, um, to help answer any questions that we may have as we talk through, um, ideas for the budget. So they will, uh, we may hear from them, they have a microphone as well. And you all know Dr. Turner. I think that is it for notes. And, uh, just as a reminder, what we asked to hear tonight, um, is a little bit of a review on the process, how we got here. Um, how we came to the decisions we did for the budget we put forth, and what, um, ideas or suggestions that administrators have for us to consider for our next round of budget proposal. So, all that said, turn it over to Chanda.
Alright, our old business is to hear an update on the FY twenty-five budget and expenditures. Um, as we discussed in our meeting last week, was that last week or two weeks ago? No, it was just last week. Um, we will have some initial documentation for you at the Finance Committee on July ninth. The intention is to bring you that month-end report for June thirty, uh, but as you know, it's June twenty-five. So we have some anticipated or estimated thoughts about where we're gonna land at the end of the school year. Um, but believe it or not, a lot can change in, uh, in just a few days, um, in, in just a few hours, frankly. The, um, expenditures that we have here that I'm looking at to share with you have changed since I left the office. Um, because we had a bill that we've been waiting for come in, so, um, it, it changes quickly. Um, but we anticipate this is about where we're gonna land. So, in FY twenty-four, so, not the school year that just got over, but last school year, we had a remaining balance of two million, two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars. We are estimating that the remaining balance at the end of this school year is gonna be one million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. That includes one hundred and twenty-five thousand that we were instructed earlier in the year to put aside, to have available for carryover to defray the tax impact, um, for next year. Um, so we've been very cautious to make sure that we stay above that number, uh, make decisions a little bit differently, uh, to make sure that we can stay there, which will leave us with about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, wiggle room this minute, I again will say. There are still five days left in our fiscal year, many encumbered costs that are wait to shake out. Uh, we will share with you more details on July ninth, keeping in mind that that will be just a few days after our fiscal year has ended. They probably will be updated even more after that, and as we go through our audit, um, which you are all familiar with. But at this time, we estimate that there will be about one point five million remaining. The majority of that lives in Article One, which is regular instruction, that is with, where the majority of our expenses live, so that makes sense. Uh, we do have three hundred and seventy-eight remaining, uh, approximately in Special Education. Um, about fifty thousand, we believe, left over in other instruction, that's about half of what it was the year before. About two hundred thousand dollars left in support. Um, we are overspent in Article Six, System Administration. You recall at our business meeting a couple of months ago, we asked, uh, for a vote of the board to be allowed to move, um, expenses between Articles, so that, uh, within statutory limits, so that we could cover that expense. That's about twelve thousand dollars over at this point. School Administration has about a hundred thousand remaining anticipated, Transportation about a hundred and eighty thousand. The vast majority of that being positions that we really need, but we weren't able to hire for. Um, and then Facilities has about a hundred and thirty-two thousand, that's a, that's a number that's one of the harder ones to nail down, because we, um, try to do a lot of projects when school gets out. But what we can do and when we can do it varies a lot, as you can see, we've got an active project. I don't know if you noticed on your way in, but we have a lift, and the plans are all out over there, there is an active project happening here at this time. So, um, that one can, can, uh, be a little, um, less per- less regularly predictable. It's not a, a regularly timed expense, um, unlike some of the other Articles. Debt Service is a little bit different, um, we normally are within a few cents of our budget of debt service. We had, um, an unanticipated, um, percentage reduction, and so we will have, uh, we think just under four thousand remaining in that article that we weren't anticipating before. And when you put all of those together, it comes out to the one point five million we anticipate, or just under one point six million we anticipate we are gonna land at, at the end of FY twenty-five.
Questions on that, Sam?
Uh, so the twenty twenty-four number, can you read that again?
Two million, two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and six cents.
So a little more than two million bucks. Um, and that is not inclusive of the one point five million that we rolled over, or?
That includes the one point five million we rolled over.
So we didn't just have that kicking around?
Correct.
We gave one point five million of that back. Uh, this is more of a parking lot question, but, you know, when you say that we had that left, my impression is that we had that left on July one, correct? Right? So, uh, we all know that July one does not end our expenditures on the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. So despite us having a little bit more than two million dollars on July one, I know from experience that we spent a lot more on the twenty twenty-four budget. Can we investigate that further? What percentage of our annual budget tends to actually go out the door after the fiscal year ends? If we could see that number over like the last three or four years, I think would be really instructive, because I think that's where a lot of the public confusion is coming, right? Because if you look at our audit, you see money out and money in, and they are only looking at one fiscal year. But there is money that has not gone out yet at the end of that fiscal year, as I understand it. If that's the case, then we might look like we've got two million bucks left over, but then over the course of the next nine months, we spend another five hundred thousand, and that's why we only rolled over one point five million, because we didn't wanna get in a place where we're spending this year's money on last year's budget. That has always been my impression, and I think that's where the confusion comes from, because our, our bank accounts are not getting bigger. Right? If the narrative as described by our speakers at the last meeting were the case, our bank account would get bigger. We saw in our most recent audit that our bank account did not get bigger. So there is some, somewhere, there is not a hand in a glove. Something is, is not correct, uh, in the, in the stories that are out there in the ether. And I think one way we might be able to investigate that is to, if we could somehow figure out how much of twenty twenty-four's budget got spent after July one, twenty twenty-five, and vice versa. That, that's just something that's been rolling around in my head for the past week, and those numbers, because I know that we didn't throw two million dollars in the bank. I know we didn't throw seven hundred fifty thousand dollars bank, I know we spent our bank account down. So something is not making sense there. David, does that make sense, what I'm asking? You were looking at me with lots of furrowed brow.
It does, I mean, part of what we know, you know, we accrue some expenses and those hit, but those.
David?
Get it in there.
Those would be, uh, so what I said was, we, we accrue expenses, and those expenses do hit the year that we accrue them in, and then we spend after that, but that wouldn't change the dollars. So, I'd have to, I can't think of what might be spent beyond after July first, but we can.
I think what we're talking about is the encumbered fees, so when we've been talking about our fund balance, we've been talking about we carried over two point two million, one point five of that went against the tax base. Six hundred thousand of that was encumbered costs that we had spent in the last fiscal year, but we hadn't received the bill for yet. We hadn't written the check, the money hadn't gone out of our account yet, but it was last year's money. So I think if I'm correct, Sam, that's what you're looking to see over a couple of years.
If that's a thing, yeah.
Yeah, we, we can get a definitive answer for you, but the encumbered, when, when I say accrued POs, that is the encumbered amount that you're speaking of, so.
But so I guess that's the question, right? So on the, like, report that we get at the Finance Meeting, right, that Hunter had at the last meeting, uh, you know, we get that big line item. If we have gotten the bill, but we have not paid it yet, I'm assuming we don't show that money as out yet, do we?
It would show on that report in the encumbered column.
Right, okay.
But in this balance that we're talking about, the one point, just under one point six, that would include?
Money that's.
Money that's encumbered that hasn't been paid yet.
Yeah, I think we just gotta try to get clarity of that in the Finance Committee meeting, I, I wanna whiteboard some stuff.
Absolutely.
Others? Questions on that, or any, I know, um, they're not final yet, so it's a, a verbal conversation. Are there any that people missed, or they want Chanda to read again, or that you have questions about?
We will bring you black and white copies, hard copies to finance, it's, I just, literally, this isn't accurate anymore since I left the office. So I just, I'm not, I, I didn't think it was appropriate to give you guys all something that before I even give it to you, it's outdated, so.
Fran?
I, I continue the conversation on the encumbered. Uh, I noticed in the, um, um, financial, the, um, the expenses, um, we already have the encumbered in there. And, um, so the amount of money raised and the amount of spent, of course, is different, because there's an incumbent amount that needs to be spent eventually, okay? So, I'm not sure, I, I think I understand what you're saying, it doesn't really make a difference in the bottom line, because it's already been raised and spent. Even though it hasn't gone out of the checking account yet, it still will be, so it doesn't matter if it's paid next year. Now, my question is, will we have a handle on how much that percentage of, or even more accurately, how much of that will be incumbent for this coming year? But, in, on July, um, first, how much? See, we should, we should, I'm sorry, am I speaking all right?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's picking you up.
Pardon?
I don't think it's picking you up.
Okay, good, so. Okay. I don't need my computer, um.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so, for June thirtieth, I guess, is the, uh, incumbent amounts. Do you have a good idea of what won't be paid until after, uh, June thirtieth? That was already asked for and raised to tax dollars?
We will have that for the Finance Committee, and so we, we've identified, or we're working on identifying those, um, situations where we won't have paid the check, and we'll have that number when we have the Finance Committee.
Okay, good.
On July ninth.
Yep.
Anyone else for now? Alright, so I think we're good on that for now. Um, I, I did like what Sam said, though, folks can keep in mind, like, whiteboard for Finance Committee. What, what sorts of things do we hear that we wanna make sure they dig into next week? Or that we wish we knew more about, or, you know, that we can make that, keep that going tonight? Um, okay, so next is an updated budget, oh.
Excuse me, oh, you wanted some more suggestions, or you're looking for a suggestion of what to have prepared for next week? Um.
Yeah.
Specifically in account? One of the things I'm looking at is the library, I'd like a breakdown of the library expenses.
Okay, that, and, that already shows up in the budget, or no?
Just numbers.
So, it, it will be in the expense report, it's just it lives under each, um, each school.
Oh, that's.
So it lives in, you know, it's much like our staffing lines, and it, it, under our chart of account system, cost centers, it kinda lives in a couple of different places. Um, but we will look into, um, I always like stress around giving you guys too much information over less information. Um, we could look at how that's organized, I know that's been, um, some feedback, we generally do that by the chart of accounts. We could pretty easily also do that by article, if you like how I make suggestions and hope that they could deliver. Um, and, and doing it by article might get at that a little bit more closely, um.
I've got the breakdown of each school, but I don't know what it's paying for, you know, it's just lines that really doesn't say.
Okay, so you'd like to receive a report as to exactly what?
Yeah, this is crazy.
I know. Um, of exactly what the expenses are within each of those.
Not every dollar, I'm, I'm looking generally speaking, like, how much totals, books do we buy? How much total do we pay for wages, how much do we pay for whatever else we pay for in the library? You know, whatever it consists of.
To, as an example of one of the ideas that Jim had more recently, of we don't see how some of these things, they're spread out along. Um, and we can't get a picture, right, of, of this, so.
Excuse me, is it?
And you're referring to the actual expenses for FY twenty-four? Is your question around the library, or are you asking for FY next year's budget?
Yeah, what consi- what does consist of the budget for the school bo- for the, um, library? For instance, I have library tot- total, when I did the report, I had four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars from, for all the schools. So, I'm looking at, getting a more, um, idea of what that buys.
In the budget?
Yep, what that buys.
Okay, so FY twenty-five, not FY, uh, FY?
I know it's more now, but that was when I did, just when I looked at it.
FY twenty-six, not FY twenty-five, yes? Just wanna make sure, I, got it, completely understand, yeah, okay.
Um, so another, uh, thing that we had requested, or that I had requested that we revisit tonight is, um, number two moving forward, we're looking at this, right, okay. Is, um, overview on, you know, if we're starting this process over, let's get ourselves settled in what is the process? How do we get to this point? Um, what sorts of things are done to, um, do this? We're compressing our whole budget season into this month, um, and we also have a new member who wasn't, uh, with us from November to all of this. So, um, Chanda has put together some information for us, um, on how we got here from a procedure standpoint. Um, and I think then we also get into some ideas and feedback on proposed changes.
Yeah, I think what we heard, um, last week were kind of some continuing questions about how it is that we build the budget. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to get more into detail of that. We tend to have shared just the ex, you know, the face, the part that faces all of you, the data reports, the staffing reports, all of that. Um, we thought it might be helpful to pull back the curtain as to the process that happens in our office. Um, so we've kind of given you an overview of that, we have a handout, Jen's gonna, um, there should be enough for everyone, and I apologize, we didn't get it to you in advance, I was working on it an hour ago. Um, we are also working on getting it on the website, so I apologize to folks joining us from home, that will be up as soon as possible.
No, I think it is.
It is, is it up now? Okay, great.
It's in, it's in tonight's.
Oh, perfect, yes, excellent, okay. When I left the office, it wasn't up yet, so, thank you. Uh, and that's a huge thank you to Jen Testa, who is on vacation today, and yet is doing this all from home, and I told her not to, but she did it anyways. And I will say thank you, um, just a tough time here. And then, um, so I'm gonna give you a second to read it, but I'm just gonna kinda go over what's on here, and then go over in more detail. The front page is really like the, in the weeds of how we develop a budget, um, of, of kind of just some key areas. Um, but you can kind of extrapolate to all the different areas of what we do. And then the backside is to spend a little time going over our budget history, to kinda help understand, um, how we budget, why we budget, why we report the data that we do, and then to get into a discussion of what we have already reduced in the budget, and then discuss some, um, thoughts that the team has had around additional reduction opportunities we may have, um, depending on where the board wants to head. So I'm gonna give you just a few minutes, I know I provided this last minute, I apologize. A few minutes to look it over, and then I will go over it as well, yeah?
Yep, um, and, uh, for those watching at home, this handout is in tonight's, um, materials folder on the website.
As you know, giving you documents at the last minute is not my preferred modus operandi, but here we are. Um, so looking at the making of a budget, um, as you have seen me present more times than most everyone at this table could stand, is the process by which, going back to November, um, how we built our budget. The piece that it does uncover is, there's this like stretchy thing in the middle that kinda says, ongoing, is department, you know, line level meetings. Um, and what occurred to me, and Penny and I chatted about it also, is, um, just some really powerful conversations. I thought last week about zero-based budgeting, and, um, maintenance of equity, and, you know, how we build a budget, and some, and some, I think, well-founded confusion about how those things interact. So I felt like it was worth taking a little time to talk about how we build that budget. So I've given you a few examples of kind of the biggest areas that tend to come into question, or, or our biggest area, staffing is our biggest area of expenditure. Um, we as staff, when we are building that budget, we always start with enrollment and student teacher ratios. And you have seen those presentations, those have been in many packets, we look at how many teachers do we need to educate the children that are gonna be with us. We review IEPs to determine shifting needs at each school. Uh, so for example, something you've seen in this budget is, um, we have a group of students who are, you know, leaving one school and going to another school that mandates we move staff around a little bit. Um, we might have new kids move in with some significant needs, we might have a kid leave with significant needs. Um, all of those things come into play when we know it, so we're reviewing IEPs to shift needs around. Um, we're reviewing department metrics, so for like, transportation is a great example, we're looking at how many runs are we doing? Are we most effective as we could be in transportation? Do we need all of these open positions that we thought we needed? Um, and making adjustments, um, as necessary. Um, and then we're looking at what are the programming needs, again, that's part of those presentations we shared with you around what are the needs in each department, and what are we looking to add in future budgets, as well as eliminating in place. to add in future budgets, as well as eliminating in places where we, um, where we, where there is less need. And so, you know, kind of from the question of do we budget just on budget? The answer is no. Um, do we budget from zero? It's not entirely true either. It's something a little bit in between, where we're really looking at what is it that we have, what is it that we think we need to run the school, and how should we either increase or decrease that to really, um, meet the goals of the district? As we're doing that, we're budgeting based on the pay of the actual people that are likely to be in those positions. So we're rolling them forward in the actual, um, salary. So if, um, we're not budgeting teacher positions based on an average amount, we're saying if Mrs. Smith was on step ten master's degree last year, and Mrs. Smith's position is likely to be maintained, we are going to budget for her at step eleven for next year because that is her contractual increase. So it's really, you know, important that these, these are not theoretical numbers. Jen, really speaking that we're using, we're using numbers based on the actual people that we currently have. Now, when we have open positions, we do use, um, you know, industry averages and hope that we, uh, as we hire, we bring people on. Some people will come on higher, some people come on lower. I will say in the hiring we've done so far this spring, um, we are just about right where we have budgeted so far. We then look at, um, in addition to that, we're then looking at tuition and other benefits, again, by person and predicting their use. So for example, with, um, the tuition benefit that we use, we literally looked at every person. We said, oh, we know this person's starting a master's degree, we should make sure we budget for that. This person, I know that they're doing this other program that's different from tuition, so they're not likely to use that particular benefit. So we don't think we need to budget for them. We are literally looking at every single person employed in our district, what their, um, benefits are, and making our best prediction of how they're going to use that. We then, in addition to all of that, review three years of actual expenditures. So as I shared with you earlier tonight, what are those actual expenditures for last year compared to, or two years ago compared to the year that's ending right now? We look back three years of what was actually spent in every single line in that entire budget book, and we make additional adjustments, um, to align with spending as needed. So you can see we do that across supplies and other related expenses. Um, other special education costs is a difficult one. You'll see we have some recommendations on that. We try to predict our out-of-district placement costs, transportation, equipment, and supplies. The challenge with that is, um, when you, when you get into out-of-district placement, one placement difference can change the budget by a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, depending on the placement. So a child coming in with a placement might add two hundred thousand in expenses. A child moving out might decrease by two hundred thousand expenses. So we do our best to predict that. It is unfortunately a by nature unpredictable number that ha- can have huge swings. So we review the IEPs, we do our best to predict, um, we do our best to predict. Um, I won't continue to belabor all of the points because you can see it's kind of a similar trend, which is analyze what it is that we need based on the metrics of the area, look at three years of actual expenditures, and then make adjustments as we move forward in our actually proposed budget. Let me stop there for a second and see if we have any questions? Questions?
Go ahead.
I'm thinking about the three-year. Uh, I didn't know that, you know, I think the public has asked for a three-year comparison, and I suspect the board has too. Um, so we can see the history was going on to help us, you know, we don't meet the budget, but at least to know what's kind of going on. Um, so I, I, I didn't realize you were doing that. So is there any way, um, we can redesign this, um, you know, the reports to include that? Um, not three years, I guess, that, but at least, I'm not sure, I don't have a, I have just the budget in front of me. I don't have the expense report. Um, I don't know, couldn't be a little clearer? Do we need to have all these columns like this? Can we have a little more, how much does it really cost in us each department? You know, that's what I'm looking at.
You want actual expenditures?
Yeah, when you're doing comparison to make a budget, all right? So what's really happening with the budget is, uh, the expenses itself. Don't forget the revenue side too. We keep having to mention that, but that's important as well. But I'm wondering, um, if there's some way of redesigning, um, the reports so that we can see a little more information?
I'm going to tentatively tell you yes, and then ask you to say more about what the specific information is you'd like to see. I just don't want to spend time creating something that then is like this, isn't all what I wanted.
Right. Um, I, I think we've mentioned it, uh, around the way, just in passing. But, um, you've got, uh, two years of expenses, um, for comparison, and then you have, um, what was budgeted, and, um, we should see the two-year budgeting as well, so we can see how this is flowing, at least for two years. You have the three years in, in, in your staff, but the public should be able to see like, you know, at least two years' worth of that kind of information. Because when you're looking through the expenses, you don't know how much was, uh, spent the prior year. So that's missing. So the report only has one year, and I don't know, would make it a little clearer?
Yeah, the budget document has last year and then the proposed. So you're looking, so you're thinking like every single line item of the budget with those four columns, essentially?
Do we, do we need all of this? I mean-
You have to have it, that way the cost on it, you have to, right?
Oh, you have to have the cost centers. Oh, yeah, definitely have to have the-
Hang on, let's, Sam?
Oh, this, yeah, this is an expert, so maybe.
Well, um, I do think there is some kind of alternative, uh, document that is between the thousand line items and the pie graph, right? I, I think that's what it's coming down to, is it's hard to see where we, you know, we know that we, uh, have leftover money every year. It's hard to see trends in that to be able to be confident in adjusting our budgeting. Cause I'm, I'm of two minds. Uh, of mind, one is that it doesn't really matter on some level, right? If we need five math teachers to teach all the kids, but last year, one of the math teachers, uh, got hit by a bus, and we had a sub instead, and we saved twenty thousand dollars, I just don't care because I still need five math teachers. I still know what those five math teachers cost. I don't want to adjust this year's budget for last year's bus hit. However, if we saw that we were conservatively, uh, budgeting for fuel oil three years in a row, and we were twenty percent high on fuel oil three years in a row, maybe I would say, okay, why don't we sort of budget a little closer to the vest on fuel oil, right? So I think there are places where it can matter. I just want to manage expectations because we know that so much of our underspend is salary, and we know that we need those people. So, you know, I don't think it's a great idea to be like, well, we've, you know, over the last three years, we've only spent eighty-five percent of our salary, so let's budget to spend eighty-five percent of the salary. That is recipe for disaster, uh, because we have to make sure we fulfill our commitments to our staff. Um, so I, I just want to caution, you know, I, I just don't want to set up some sort of expectation where, I do think in the private sector, right, in the private sector, if we had budgeted three years in a row, and we had under hired, and we came in twenty percent high on salary three years in a row, absolutely, the CFO should recommend that we budget lower. But this is different, you know, we are, these are public employees that we have contracted obligations to. On some level, we cannot tell the union, hey, we know that we have a hundred of you hired, but we're only going to budget for ninety-five because we think some of you are just aren't going to happen. Like, we can't do that, you know? Uh, and that's so much of our budget.
So maybe not by line. I know we, we've already started to build it by article because that's part of what we intend to bring you on the ninth, but perhaps something in between those two levels of detail.
Uh, further on that, um, staff piece too, is we have also heard from the public in emails, at our meetings, no matter what their, their tone on the budget is, we are not asking to cut staff. Do not cut teachers. Do not cut programming. How do we illustrate to people what that really looks like? And I want the, that to be very clear. Um, you know, how it adds up, what part of our staffing, um, is our budget and this idea that, well, if you have money, how do you have transportation money left over, and you need bus drivers, just hire a bus driver? Um, the reality is, is that we can't hire bus drivers. If we could hire a bus driver, we would. Um, and I think there's a little bit of confusion or misunderstanding about the, the very real, um, essentially job market for us is, and what if they changed the rules for CDL next year? What if they opened a new program, and suddenly we actually could hire three bus drivers and get our routes back and get kids off the bus for these hour-long rides? And we say, actually, we can't, because now we got to go back to voters and explain to them that we actually do need that money, and we're not going to, you know, I, I'm reluctant to think we would get it. So, Gary?
Uh, I agree with, I agree with Sam on the majority of what, what he brought up, and, um, I'm talking right into it.
Nope.
No?
We're, we're probably going to return these-
I have never been told I couldn't be heard.
We're, we're going to get you guys one pin to you, I think.
My thought is that, uh, we need to improve the narrative that goes along with the budget for, for public consumption in that, um, more detail isn't going to help, I don't think, in many ways. Cause without a narrative or without context, it doesn't mean a lot. And I've looked at a lot of these for a lot of years. Um, so I think if we, if there was some kind of way of, like Sam said, something in between, that maybe had more narrative to describe, describe what's included in that. Because my other thought on this is that if we were making a widget, we could predict our cost. But we're not, and our, our product is dynamic. We don't even know who's going to be here for kids next year. I mean, we, we've got a pretty good idea. The ones that were here, the tenth graders will be in the eleventh grade. But are we going to gain two special needs kids? Are we going to lose three? Are we going to, I mean, we just don't know. We're going to lose a teacher or two over the summer and not be able to hire, and then we're going to be jamming them? Um, are we going to have an opportunity come up to enhance some, or hire somebody that, that didn't seem to be available in the spring? I mean, this, this industry is so much more flexible and dynamic than if we were providing a widget. And I think it's important. I, I don't, I'm not sure, if you haven't served on the board, I don't think it's easy to understand that. I mean, you intuitively know it. I mean, these are kids learning. That's our product. But it's hard to measure, it's hard to predict, and we do the best we can. But we know, a lot of this stuff, we know what we need to support who we have, but that can change so quickly. And the numbers every, look, comparing this year to last year, without a narrative, doesn't mean a lot. Cause that budget line may be different solely because there was a kid or two, or a teacher or two, or something happened, or we had nine school days instead of two, so suddenly we had subs, or people who couldn't come in, or we had to go remote, or we had, you know, I mean, without a narrative, you're looking back two years on a budget line, who knows what that means? So I just think that, that what the, for me, the piece we're missing is the explanation of what some of these things mean. Um, because the questions, again, in our public meetings, they don't want us to cut anything, but they don't want us to have any money left. But I think there's a misunderstanding of how much money we've got, actually got left. So I think that narrative explaining in a, I don't want to say softer, but in a less number-heavy document way, might explain how the, how this mush we deal with every year works. That makes sense? Does that make, I don't know. If I get halfway into that, I'm not sure I'm making sense anymore.
It may also be valuable to have the finance committee get in the weeds about the various, uh, models we can use, and what makes sense. Um, to me, we need some wiggle room, we have it, and then if you look at our estimate, we're essentially playing on giving almost all of it back. All of our float back next year in revenue, directly to, to lower the taxpayer. So I, I feel like in, on paper, that should be reassuring. We, we need some room to make sure we get through the year. We budgeted, we did a really good job. Some things were not as expected, and, okay, of this money, we're going to use some of it to seed next year. And it, it seems to be unpopular with some folks. Um, and are we not explaining it well? Is there a different path? Is there a different model in which we can? Sam?
Well, so there are some people for which that particular explanation is always going to sound bad, right? Um, so, you know, I, for instance, as a self-employed person, uh, I choose not to, uh, estimate my taxes quarterly, and I pay them all at the end because I don't want to give the government one dollar more than I have to. I don't want the government to give me money back. I'll hold on to my money, and I'll give it to you when I need to give it to you. So there are some people who are philosophically opposed to the idea that we would collect a million dollars too much and then roll it back into the next year, right? And I think we have the narrative that I agree with, with Gary the most about, is why we have to do that, right? There really is not a way for us to be as accurate as the public commentators would like us to be, because, A, because of the, you know, the five percent that we can move between articles is really not that much. Uh, and B, it's just the nature of, like Gary said, that unpredictability, right? So I do think, you know, I, I believe a statement was made in public comment that we're the only ones who do this. And I just don't think that's true. We have heard, like, I am pedantic about asking our auditor every single year, do we look like every other district? Every year, our auditor says, you look just like every other district. In fact, you have way, you know, less debt. Um, he has never once, professional nerd, said, you know, you guys really hold on to a lot more money than most people I watch. Not one time, right? So if we were doing something wildly out of character for school districts, I think our professional auditor who gives us no notes might say, hey, you guys are really outside of the norm, right? So maybe we need to say, look, Cumberland rolls over two million bucks. Yarmouth rolls over a million and a half bucks. You know, Madawaska rolls over fifty-seven dollars, you know, I, I, may, you know, maybe that has to be part of it. Because I do understand this, I don't want to give the government more money than I need to. Like, I get that sentiment, but I think, you know, we have to show that in this case, you know, we don't have a lot of choices. We, you know, we would be really hamstrung if we didn't do it that way.
I think this might be an interesting time to, uh, report to the board. We'll talk about it more in depth at finance, but the legislature did approve to permanently change the maximum percent to, that, um, school districts can, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Have in the bank?
Have in the bank, to nine percent from three percent. So you may recall, they moved it up to nine percent during COVID. Um, it went, it was due to go back to three percent. Um, they have voted to permanently, till they act again, uh, leave it at nine percent. Um, and, and if you're interested as to know why, there's a lot of testimony around kind of those margins that school districts are expected to operate within, and that three percent is not a realistic margin to ask, um, school districts to work within. And so nine percent seemed more appropriate to those legislators, um, that voted it in. So it, it's not officially enacted yet. Uh, the, has the one hundred and thirty-first legislature closed yet? When I checked yesterday, it hadn't yet. I didn't check today.
No, it's closed.
No.
They're closed.
They closed?
No, they're closed.
They're closed. I thought you said they're closed. I'm like, oh, they closed it. Um, so we won't have an official enacted date until they close, but-
It's still appropriate.
Very close, yeah. So, anyway, nine percent.
So, I got comment. Um, so I'm in contact with different people at different school districts, and they, these people, I apologize. Oh. And so anyway, uh, the point is that they, um, they, um, I'm in the same boat. People from Yarmouth, Cumberland, North Yarmouth, you know, all these people are just regular every day, all they know and all they can see, as well as the people in Gray and the Gloucester, that they are going to be forced out of their homes. So they have to now, we have to look at, you know, what we are doing to the community, just as all other schools should be doing. We're not the, you know, you're right, we're not any different than any other school district, but they're doing the same thing, enforcing many elderly and, and whatever, um, from paying higher taxes. I mean, four hundred dollars, another increase for me this year, five hundred. I mean, it becomes, you know, so we have to be very careful with every dollar. Um, things that are under contract, I don't really look at because that's up to the contracting committees to take care of all of that, um, and to recognize, you know, the needs of the community. But I'm looking at other areas. For instance, I think Sam's example of twenty percent increase each year, it's- Let's say if it was oil, okay? Have we, um, we stay with the same company, and we're paying the twenty percent increase, then all of a sudden, oil goes down, and we're still paying the twenty percent. I trust the staff is taking care of all of that, and it's not, you know, saying that they're not. But I, I've given an example of what I think people wanna make sure their dollar is being spent, um, for the benefit of, uh, the community and not wasted. So if you didn't renegotiate with someone else and save some money, because that's a big bill, um, you know, are we doing our job? So I'm looking at that from that side, the perspective. You don't wanna be with these people who are from, um, Cumberland, who put in a three-million-dollar turf field. Every single time, that's all they talk about. So, very angry, very angry. So I, I think we have a responsibility to, I'm not nitpicking the budget, but I think we have to have an overall feel of what we are doing in the community as well. We want kids educated, be able to go and get jobs, to go on to school, you know, we want, that's what we all want. And how we get there, we, we really should be taking a deeper look into how we're getting there. So, I mean, that's just, maybe it sounds like a philosophy, but, I mean, I listen to this all the time, and, um, you know, but, and these people, by the way, are just regular everyday, they're not board members or anything like that.
I, I'd love to just, um, bring up, I think you asked a great question, which is, you know, how do we, you know, budget and plan for those kinds of things? And, and I'd like to just take the opportunity to say that, yes, not only do we constantly look at, can we do better with different companies? Looking what we put out to bid, when we put it out to bid. We work with a collabora, we al- also try to work with a collaborative. So whenever we can, we try to pool with other school districts to increase our buying power, to lower our expenses. So that's a lot of what we do with the Greater Sibego Education Alliance, is we sit around the table and we say, what are our expenses around, um, fuel? So fuel for our, our bus station, we do collaborative buying with the Greater Sibego Education Alliance in order to, um, have a bigger buying power in order to lower our, our costs. So, um, we are constantly looking at that.
I'm not just saying you're anywhere, but, you know.
Oh, I, yeah, it just seemed like a great opportunity to plug our work with the Greater Sibego Education Alliance.
I'm glad you did.
I think Misty had something.
I think that the people that are voting no, just, they're, regardless of what we do here, they just don't want a tax increase, and I understand that. And then those that are voting yes, wanna support our schools, not that the noes don't, but you see, knew what I'm saying. I think that it's hard in where we're sitting and, and right in our shoes, because we have to balance both worlds and suppo, and do our jobs. And finding that happy medium for everybody is impossible to do. It's, the matter of fact is that we need to get people out to the polls to vote, and that's where we're lacking. I think that not only do we have, have to have the conversation about the budget, but we also need to figure out that angle, and why aren't people coming to vote? Because I feel like with nineteen votes, that's such a small number, we know that we have the majority of people in our towns that wanna support our schools, but where are they? And, you know what I'm saying, like, that's,
We don't know that, that's the thing we don't know, actually. That's why we vote, we hope.
Right, I know, but the, the number of people that actually show up to vote compared to the, the voters that we have is, is vastly different. And so that's where I think the missing piece of that pie is. I think that we need to do this here and analyze and, and count our pennies and our dollars, because it's important. And I mean, I own five properties in Gray and Gloucester, I have the biggest tax impact of probably everybody. I mean, but I wanna support our schools, and I know that we do a great job, our budget presentation is amazing every year. I, we have increased three percent over ten years. Like, those are the numbers, are people not listening to that? Like, our increase compared to all of the other districts is down here, not up here. And all of, and the, I don't know if the people just aren't hearing that. I don't know how we get it out to them so they do understand that, or they just don't care and they're still gonna vote no. So we're in a, just a really tough spot, um, because there's, since the last budget, when the vote failed, that people are like, oh my god, I can't believe that it failed, well, did you come vote? And, well, no, I couldn't, I had this, I had that, I had this, I didn't make it out to the polls. Well, here we are. So I think it, it's both things, we have to do our job here as we, as we're going to do. We also need to work on the other side too, is we need to figure out how to more, get more people out to polls. So, just my two cents.
Anyone else for now? I totally lost track of where in this conversation we are.
We're still talking about how we build the budget.
Alright, we're still talking about how we build the budget.
Shall we move into? Page two?
Page two. So, one of the things, um, I feel like we heard last week, and we have sort of had some cheerful debate about semantics, and what does this mean? So one of the things we also wanted to talk about tonight was how, um, it's built versus whether you call it a mean and effort, whether you call it zero budgeting, um, and how we got to the proposed five-point-nine-three percent that failed in June. Are there, do you wanna read through that, or do we wanna just take questions and conversation about it?
Whenever you prefer.
Is anyone stuck on that, or wanna talk about that more? I feel like you got into that on the,
Yeah, I think we covered that earlier.
Okay. Um, and then moving on, sorry, I'm taking over your show, um, I think that moves us to reductions in de-prioritizations?
Yes. Um, so in this table, you'll see on the left, um, that proposed budget that was approved at validation, but failed at ballot, included the, a number of eliminations, you guys have all seen this, um, in many, many different documents. We're now looking at what else can we move? Um, and I wanted to kinda give a little bit of an overview, I tried to kinda, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, I think we heard a couple of different things from the community last week, and from you all around, wanting to be thoughtful about, and, and emails we've received from the public around, um, trying to keep the impacts as far away from kids as possible. So I, I kinda tried to categorize them, it's my opinion about what is least impactful to students, up to the closest impact to students. But it's my paper, so I decided what, what, what. Uh, so what that looks like at this time. So in that group of least student impact that I would recommend that we move forward with, the first is, um, a bond interest reduction. Um, we were able to, uh, secure a lower interest rate on the borrowed money for the air quality project than we anticipated we were gonna be able to get. We're gonna be able to save about thirty-five thousand dollars in next year's budget with that secured lower interest rate. I preview to you all, you all voted to support, uh, moving forward with a private paid family medical leave provider. By moving forward with that, um, with that plan, it will save about forty thousand dollars in next year's budget. We had at one point reported, we thought we could save about eighty thousand dollars. Um, that was, we, we had included, um, teachers in that, in that savings, and, um, the teachers will not be part of that until they renegotiate their contract, that's part of the law. Um, so that was an error on our part, um, but it still would represent about a forty thousand dollar saving in next year's budget. The third is around the superintendent's contract. It was budgeted based on, um, not knowing who the person was going to be in the position. At the time, we had to present budgets, um, things were not finalized. And, um, based on the predictive compared to the actual, there's about twenty-five thousand dollars savings in the budget that we can make there. We also, um, are listening to our, uh, to our community who talks a lot about that out-of-district placement. It's also often referred to as tuition, which gets confusing, because we also have college tuition for employees. What we're talking about is tuition, when we have to send, when we aren't able to educate a student or meet their full needs in our schools, and we have to send them to another setting, whether that's a day setting or a residential setting. Um, we have not spent all of our budgeted funds for a number of years, and that is one of those, um, data points that's brought up fairly, fairly frequently. So we really dug in on that, uh, we looked at lots of different options, there's, there's, this is one of those areas where one student difference can change two-hundred thousand dollars one way or another. Um, so we always worry about, um, lowering those expenses too much, because those are expenses that we are legally obligated to have. Um, we cannot, you know, as part of the IEP process, if that is what is determined, we have to pay for it, we don't have a choice. Um, so we, we are always a little cautionary. There are a couple of different ways that you can, um, you know, you can do that. We, in the past, have budgeted for it, and then when we didn't spend it, we put that into what we sent off, you know, deferred off the tax base in the next year. Um, we can do it differently through a couple of different options. What we are gonna recommend is that we reduce the, uh, the tuition or that out-of-district placement funding in next year's budget by two-hundred thousand dollars. And instead, we look to use local entitlement and other funding sources to meet those needs, instead of having it in our local budget. We believe, having looked at a lot of different options, we think that that makes sense, um, and would be an appropriate option moving forward. We also dug in deeply on health insurance. Um, we are looking at, um, we were looking at a fourteen percent increase, as you know, twelve is what we had budgeted for, fourteen is what it came in at, um, but that's on a bottom line. That you then add in on that, what do, what do people take for insurance? When we are building our budget, we don't know the answer to that. Um, we make our best prediction as to what we think they're gonna take. Based on looking at the last, you know, three years of spending, how FY25 spending is starting to land, and what we're seeing for what people are electing to take in insurance for the coming year, we think that we can reduce that, um, expense in our budget, uh, by thirty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars, um, and still be okay. Again, that's one of those things where we are obligated to pay it by contract, whatever the expense may be, but we do think that reducing that budget by that amount would, would still be safe. So if we were to take those reductions, it totals about, uh, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it would take the increase last year to this year, it's very weird to talk about it when you're in June, last this, well, you know, the just ended, to the school year that's starting, the increase would then be four-point-eight-nine percent. So down just about, you know, a little bit.
It's basically a percent, every three-hundred thousand dollars is basically a percent.
Yeah. Looking at that next line with a little bit more student impact, um, we dug in on unfilled ed tech positions some more. Um, as you know, we have run about twelve open ed tech positions, give or take, um, at all times, doing some more analysis on where those are, and what the needs are, what the IEPs are. Uh, we think we could potentially, um, I don't, I don't love it, we will likely have to move people who are currently employed around, um, the district, we may need to do that anyway, to meet the needs. Um, if we make additional, um, reductions, we certainly are. We think we could potentially do without an additional three positions, which would save about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And then we, um, did some dig, digging deep on co-curricular and athletics. Uh, we looked at, again, three years' worth of spending in that area, um, and we're finding that there's about forty to fifty thousand, except one anomaly year, that hasn't been spent, as we dig into that, it kinda comes down to those, um, clubs or athletics where we, we aren't able to hire a person, we had, so we had student interest in a chess club and a math club, but we weren't able to find an advisor for both. We had someone that was willing to do one, but not the other, kinda thing. So we try to, as you can see in how we build the budget, we look at what's the interest of students, um, what do we think we can support as capacity, we can budget in that way. But then sometimes we aren't able to fill all of the positions. So kind of looking back over time, we think we could pretend, we already reduced that by ten thousand in the original proposal. Uh, we looked at, uh, for example, the Dunn School kayak program, we haven't been able to fill that since before COVID. Um, so it was time to perhaps think about letting that go as a stipend. But we believe that, um, we can perhaps reduce another twenty-five thousand out of that budget and not necessarily impact what we're offering students. We'll continue to follow student interest and offer those, um, those clubs, activities, and athletics that have the most student interest. Um, but based on what we've been able to fill, we likely can reduce that by twenty-five thousand, without offering fewer choices for students. They might not have all the choices they want, but we would be able to offer potentially the same number of clubs and activities we have offered in the past. Um, so it would be kind of more of a case where if, and if the high school or middle school were looking to add something, um, we would be looking for them to then not do something else, um, more so than perhaps we have in the past. So it takes away a little bit of that flexibility in co-curricular. Um, but as I said, it, it comes mostly from unfilled, things that weren't running. So if we add that second layer of more student impact in, we're up to about a total of five-hundred thousand dollars of reductions, which would bring the increase to four-point-three-six percent last year to next year. Then if the board was looking for us to go further than that in what we pro- propose, we are into student impacts. We would look at moving forward with a hiring freeze, not filling open positions, and then, um, if we had to, eliminating positions that exist and instituting reductions in force, if we were to have to do that, that is not my preference, um, but if that is where the board would like us to go, we can talk about that more. Um, specifically, um, an example, we, uh, do have an opening at this time at the high school in the math department. Looking at that and discussing it with the high school, what would it look like if we didn't fill that position? Um, they would make it work, because they are professionals, and that's what they do. But I will tell you, we will not have as many math offerings at the high school in the past. And what we will have to do is we would focus on those that are necessary for diploma, and then fill in those that are for IB next, and then other advanced from there. But the likelihood of us being able to offer more kind of specialty, high-level mathematics does go down. Um, and that's just the truth of the matter, it's, I don't mean it to be a threat, I don't mean it to be, you know, but it's just, it's the truth. You know, we have a schedule built to meet the needs and interests of kids in mathematics. If we had one less position, we would find other things for children to do, but there, there would be fewer math courses offered at the high school. So that's an example of an unfilled position that we could consider, should the board want us to.
Questions on that last bit?
What was the percentage again? That last percentage after the five-hundred thousand?
Four-point-three-six.
Misty and then Gary?
What was it?
Um, thank you for that, Chanda. Um, I think looking at these points are really important, and I think this, the least impact, obviously, is, uh, where I, obviously, I hope I fall, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but, um, and then I think that, I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with reducing the ed tech positions, because I think that those are really in need at our schools, and if we can find positions, people to fill them, I think they're really important, helping our teachers out. Um, the co-curricular, you know, do we, the kayak, I agree with, you know, chess and the other things like that. I mean, if it's gonna save a little bit, and making that one, I would be okay with that one, but I don't think that we should be cutting ed tech positions, I think that would have an, an impact for sure. But just my opinion.
Gary?
Uh, first question, well, uh, first comment, I guess I'm gonna comment first. Um, I will never support hiring freezes or eliminating positions. I will never vote yes on that.
Microphone, microphone.
I will never vote yes on that. Um, that, we're in a place where we're not happy with student outcomes now, and we start taking away incentives, and we start taking away electives, and we take away, and that's, that's what happens when we eliminate staff. They proposed a certain number of full-time equivalents in every department, because that's what we need for the programming we carry. All of that programming was, was, um, approved and supported by this board. So it's up to us to preserve it. Um, so like I said, I, I will never, uh, go along with that, because I just think that damages, and once, once you lose, it's so hard to put back. So, um, I fought in years past to, to get greater electives and more opportunities, especially in math and science, and to go backwards is just awful, in my opinion. Uh, I agree with Misty about the, uh, ed tech positions. They're, they're not proposed because they're nice to have, they were proposed because it's what we need. We have a hard time filling them, that's just the world of education. It doesn't mean, not filling them doesn't mean we don't need them. We're, we've been asking staff for the last five years to work with less. Not because we haven't supported them, but because we can't find the people to fill the positions. But that doesn't mean that the design of the educational curriculum here is designed to work best with those positions. And I, I just think, again, we approve the curriculum, we approve, uh, what we do, we approve contracts, we approve all that stuff, and to start narrowing all that, I just think it's a mistake. The least student impact, I can go with that, I do have a question about out-of-district placement, does that include superintendent agreements?
I didn't hear the question.
I'm just wondering if the out-of-district placement include, is affected by superintendent agreements?
No.
The assumption on this is that,
This is just special education.
This is just special education.
Superintendent agreements are just dealt with, um, at state level for funding and, Superintendent agreements are just dealt with um, at state level for funding in the state. Um, as long as they're reported correctly, gives us the proper funding for the students that we receive and vice versa. So no, this is simply a special education.
So that's just a wash. We don't have the child, so we don't have the money.
We would, yeah, we would see that on the revenue side, not the expense side.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't know if it, it somehow was reflect, ended up being reflected in that line or not. So, okay, that's separate. That answers that question. So that's my opinion.
Do we, before we um, go down the uh, chiming in with our opinion road, just for clarity, any other clarifying questions on the material that's been presented?
I have a clarifying question just on the positions in regard to our negotiated contracts. Do our unions not have uh, any say in these uh, position reductions? I thought some of them would be considered reductions in force because there would be like seniority would come into play if a certain position was not going to be offered and all that sort of thing. And we haven't seen or heard from a union representative in quite some time. Uh, so I was just wondering, are they, they're just cool with all this? Like, I'm kind of surprised they're not a little louder at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think they um, of course, would prefer to have more people in their buildings over last time. Speaking on their behalf with them not having shared that opinion with me, but from what I know of them, I would venture a guess that that would be true. Um, so far, any position that we have proposed to eliminate our open positions, um, and so that is part of the educational plan. That is not something that is contracted and negotiated. If we were to get down into that third area where we're talking about eliminating positions that do have people in them, then it would trigger a reduction in force conversation. Back to your point about seniority and making sure, you know, if we eliminate this person's position, they're still owed a position and where they go. And that is a very um, proscriptive process in the contract and in legislation that we would sit down and do with that um, with that organization. Should we um, should you all feel you would like us to move forward with that kind of third area? And we started looking seriously at, at um, reductions that would include reductions in force. I would be having that conversation with the union presidents prior to bringing that to all of you so that they understood the process and were able to help us make sure that we understood the process um, and to make sure we're following all laws, rules and regulations related to that. The other piece that comes into contract gets back to kind of what I was saying before where um, where we have the people, right, we have positions, we have people. Where we have the people and where we have the positions, um, we may, based on our staffing, we may need to move some people around. We try to do that voluntarily first. We ask people, you know, can you, would you please be willing to do that? If they do not opt, if we don't have folks opt for the voluntary, we would have to move forward with involuntary transfers. That is um, scripted in the contracts about how that works and we would work with the unions on that, um, should we need to do that process.
Fran?
Again, we're here to make sure that the kids know math, reading, science, history. Uh, I could no way support a hiring freeze uh, to fill those core-
Is this a question?
Oh, um, no, it's a comment.
Okay, one, just one sec. I'm gonna, we're gonna do the go around, so.
Oh, okay.
But I just want to make sure everyone has their questions answered, should it impact their
Sure.
uh, little, little speech that we're all dying to give. Um, Adam, is that a hand? Please speak in your microphone, sir.
Do we have a list of the like three-year average or how many, how many unfilled ed tech positions we've been carrying? Uh, and what that balance has been on the low end? You know what I mean? Like, what's the least amount of unfilled ed tech positions we've carried type of parking lot question?
No, that's data we have at our fingertips.
No, I think that's finance committee. But yeah, we need to know that number for sure.
Okay. I, I can tell you that, you know, anecdotally from, because I look a lot, um, it runs twelve. I think I've seen it as low as eight. I've seen it as high as fourteen over the last couple of years. Um, that is my top of head answer, but we will add to our list to bring. We have nine right now. Thank you, Jen. Uh, we have nine right now. Uh, so we will bring that unfilled ed tech position. It's specific to ed tech? Are you looking for more job categories than that?
Only ed techs because that's all that was.
We will pull that data together for you.
And you said the propose, potential proposal was three?
An additional three. We already have five.
And just to build on that clarifying question, are, I think by the math, we are like, sort of rule of thumb, an all in, an all in ed techs about fifty K a year? Is that about right?
Yes. A little bit, sorry, I thought you were reaching for the microphone. Um, a little bit more than that when you, you said ed techs?
Yeah.
Just make sure I have the right one.
Well, I've tended to think of an all-in teachers about seventy-five and an all-in ed techs about fifty on average. I mean, I know that's very error bar heavy, but I think that's about right.
Jen, say it, tell us.
Yes, ed techs in the range of fifty pending what they choose for health insurance coverage. Um, teachers, I err because they're, um, the salary for ed techs is closer in range. So it's really um, insurance dependent. Teachers, uh, depending on what degree they have and what they come in at, have a very, very large variance. So they can have easily a twenty to thirty thousand dollar salary swing and then add health insurance. So I usually say eighty-five for teachers, um, trying to just give a little bit of a buffer. But some teachers with a higher degree and taking health insurance can cost up to a hundred and twenty thousand. So just to give a little bit of a variance there. Um, but yeah, you're right.
All right. So I think we've thought of all the questions for now. Title to ask questions at any time, but. Um, so from there, I would love to go around um, and take sort of a temperature, um, get everyone's two cents, what sort of things, particularly if you're not on the finance committee. Um, would you, uh, you know, set them forth with the next week as a reminder? We hope to have the finance committee end that meeting with a, a new budget number that they voted on um, and comes forward to us for a vote. So while there's always room for conversation, like, let's get as much of that um, kicked around tonight in terms of what we want to see or what we're going to support so that we don't have a big surprise from there. So Fran, do you want to kick us off?
Okay, um, okay, for the first three hundred and fifty thousand, um, I, 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 you know, I, I concur. That, that is a good start. And you're right, it's the least amount of impact. And um, the uh, ed techs positions, I need a better handle on how many and that type of thing. And what is the real duties, you know? I mean, if there's like one ed tech for one student? Or is like one ed tech for maybe five students to help in the classroom? I'm not sure how that system works. So I personally, uh, just need a handle on that. But as I was starting, uh, and the extracurriculum, uh, curriculum athletic, um, that, you know, when you have to look at um, um, looking at cutting teachers versus having athletic type um, clubs or whatever they're called. Uh, I mean, the, the clubs, you know, I, I wouldn't, you know, go for that. I would, you know, keep the teachers. We, we can't, we can't uh, um, just uh, even though we haven't filled the position, we still have to make every effort we can to fill the position. That means the hiring freeze. I would not support a hiring freeze. Um, and uh, no matter, you know, it, it, and when you mentioned math, mm-mm, no. You know, that, that's what we really need teachers for is math especially and reading's next. But then you got your science and everything else. So I wouldn't be in favor of a hiring freeze. So, uh, or eliminating positions because I do know, even though you've covered, um, you know, some of these items, I think I have other suggestions. When we have the budget committee, I'll have some other suggestions that um, we can look at. You know, and look at those numbers and see what they look like. Thank you.
My turn? Um, I can live with the least student impact ones. They make sense. I think that was a pretty good chunk, like Fran said, the three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the ed techs I'm concerned with because I know that there's, they really do a lot of one-on-one with kids. So, and I know we can't fill them, but I don't want to just eliminate them altogether. But maybe if we have to lose a couple, you know, I could deal with that. Um, co-curriculars, align that a little bit more, that's okay. I totally am against a hiring freeze. And again, I'm against eliminating positions because we, I think we're right-sized for our class sizes to be manageable and to have the right offerings. And I would just be afraid that if we lose one, we would, I don't know how that would ripple through the system. So that's where I'm at.
Um, again, is that first section you said four point eight brings us down to four point eight?
Brings us down to four point eight.
Yep. Love that. Um, again, getting rid of a clubs that we don't fill, I think is not um, getting rid of clubs that we don't, are, aren't filled, I think I'm okay with that for sure. Um, I don't want to touch ed techs. Um, this one behind here on the screen has an ed tech, um, because she's a lot. Um, so I'm just being honest. Um, so this is the kind of kid that you're going to impact by not having that person in the classroom. Um, so I would be against that for sure. Um, but first section, I think a four point eight number revised budget, I think is a great number. And then taking out a couple of the clubs we're not filling would be a little bonus, but.
All right. I, I generally agree.
Jim?
I'm probably a little-
I'm going to encourage you to talk into your microphone.
Sure. I generally agree. Uh,
Great.
Uh, I, I am a little bit more, I mean, ed techs, don't get me wrong, they're uh, quite cost-effective. Uh, they, they do, they do a good job. They're much more, you know, one-on-one. But they're, they're fairly a, a good, a good investment for the most part. But uh, I think uh, it's good to have flexibility i- if, if they want to uh, have the flexibility to eliminate a position. Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that. As somebody who's been laid off more times than I care to publicly divulge, you know, getting laid off is not a death sentence. Some of the best opportunities I had came after I got laid off. So uh, it's not, I know it's kind of reluctant to do that, but it's not the end of the world. One thing I do want to point out is um, the, the budget, uh, local contribution. And I think this is, might get to the heart of the matter. And I know why it's the numbers are the way they are, but it still doesn't, I think it, it hurts us. Uh, Gray pays almost sixty-seven percent of the local contribution and New Gloucester pays thirty-three. And roughly the amount of students are, are, you know, not nearly that out, out of balance. So I, I don't want to create a we, they, Gray, New Gloucester feud here. But I think that's a big part of the, the resistance and why it failed in Gray. And there's not much we can do with it, given the uh, the formula that calculates it, that we're saddled with. But I think it's a problem. All right, that's it.
Um, I already said most of what I was going to say anyway, uh, so you already heard it. Uh, I was just going to add that um, my problem with losing the unfilled ed tech positions is that the kids that are getting services are getting them from somebody. You know, if there's no ed tech available, then we're filling that position with people who should be doing other things.
Like the teachers.
Uh, well, if, if it's especially, if it's a special ed one-on-one kind of thing, then you've got other people who should be managing ed techs or department heads or whatever, filling in for ed techs with those kids. Because that's what ends up happening. We don't have a choice. Legally, we have to provide services to these kids. So the ripple goes out. It's not just the ed tech position. It affects the others around them. As our former curriculum director will assi- will attest during COVID when she was doing health screenings. Um, that's the way it ends up happening. So I, as much, I mean, I, I will defer to the professionals we hire who make these great decisions, that if they want to eliminate a couple, I understand. On the co-curricular side, um, I think it's good to align that, we should be looking at that anyway every couple of years and aligning that, I think, with actual use. And the other part of that is that any one of those stipends could be added back in on a short notice. And the chances are, if you eliminate eight, eight positions, could, for lack of interest, well, there might be enough interest for one of them to come back next year. And we can certainly find the money for one stipend. Um, so if it saves, if it gets us, if it's a good show of faith that we found, found dollars and we can cut that, I'm not concerned about it because I know we can, we could, if there was interest. Because I always, my feeling is that if we've got fifteen kids who have a common interest, they want to do something, we need to find a way to make that happen for them. Because for some of those kids, it's the only reason they come to school. Uh, so uh, anyway, so yeah. I support the top part, the least student impact. I've got problems, a little bit of problems with the middle, but I could support the co-curricular rea- realignment. And the third part, I'm a hard no.
All right. I am in a similar boat. Um, I really like, what's on the left is a good reminder. I do not support eliminating um, all of our unfilled positions. We have already, the budget we put forth already eliminates five ed tech positions. So maybe over a couple of years that it's steady that, okay, we, we're getting by, we don't need these. I don't know why we would go from having twelve unpaid positions to zero. That seems, you know, a pretty extreme move to make in a year and they'd be hard to get back. Um, the least student impact options gets us below a five percent increase, which we had talked about as a very magical number earlier in the season that we felt that was hard to get to. Um, here we are, working with, with more accurate numbers later in the game, and that number has appeared. I have zero interest in impacting students any more than we already have. Um, that's our least student impact, but the, we already have made some changes that are going to impact students. The co-curricular, if it's aligned to what, to what's reasonable, what we're using, that's fine. I don't want to cut, you know, forty thousand out of a thirty-five million dollar budget for, to make a show of it and then have kids not have what they need. Um, I think that our job is to be uh, good stewards of the community. Um, but really what we're put here to do is to serve and run the school district and to put forth a budget that is less than five percent increase in the current economic climate. That includes significant and appropriate uh, staffing increases, an increase of our health insurance, and is still below um, the rate that everybody else's household is growing, uh, is reasonable. It is in a, it is just inappropriate to think we're going to have a zero percent budget. Um, we are not fulfilling our duty to students by claiming that that's going to happen. So I think that is my two cents for the finance uh, committee right now.
I'm uh, like, oh, I'm going to repeat a lot of what others have said. Least student impact, that um, I can be on board with um, all of that. And I do appreciate um, folks digging in and really refining those numbers. For the more student impact, um, I, I could be on board on reducing the positions of both ed techs as well as the co-curriculars in that it might, it will be aligning with what's out there in the job market. However, I would still want to make sure that we are stressing flexibility um, on the co-curricular and the athletics to uh, meet what is the student need at, you know, for that year and, and what they're wanting to desire. So um, showing that we still have flexibility in, in providing those services. And then um, going back, going to the next one, that most student impact, you know, hearing that, you know, a possibility would not be, um, would be to not fulfill a math um, position at the high school. You know, was it last year or the year before that our high school was ranked number six in the state? Think about it, what it would mean if we can't fulfill the, the needs for, for math. And um, I, I just think that that would be incredibly tragic. That is not something that um, you can reverse in a year and would show um, a trend, you know, a negative trend, I would think, on the quality of education that we are offering our students. So um, I am a, a hard no on the hiring freeze or eliminating positions.
I would support the least student impact portion. The, I think it's on the unfilled ed tech positions, it's kind of based um, around the clarity we get in the finance committee about what kind of average are we carrying for unfilled versus what we currently have. Um, I could support it if the balance was a high enough number that admin was semi-comfortable with. Um, it's pretty clear the co-curricular, you could cut all of them and it wouldn't make that much difference. So to echo, um, maintaining flexibility and kind of a dynamic landscape on the co-curricular, like, like the kayak program, east, the- like, like the kayak program, east, our esports one that we added probably wasn't even a thing then. So if we're, we constantly have eyes on that and we're adding and subtracting as needed, that's how we should be looking at co-curricular anyways. Yeah.
I'm basically going to repeat what everyone has kind of said at this point. I would support the least student impact items. They, they bring us below the 5% that we've talked about in our meetings. Is that better?
Unfortunately, it works best when you don't even try to look at anyone else and you just. Okay, I'll just stare at the mic, I'll break all the public speaking rules ever. I'm, I don't think I can support the additional removal of the ed techs just because we've already eliminated five, another three seems like a lot. And I know we've had a lot of vacancies, but to me, there's a lot of value to what they add in the classroom. And I don't think we would ever want to be in the position where someone wanted that job and we didn't have an opening. We, there's a need. I think it makes sense to align the co-curricular activities. You know, if something hasn't been filled for a while, then it's probably worth removing. We can always add it back. I am definitely a hard no on a hiring freeze or eliminating any positions. I would not support that at all.
I want to just, a couple of comments, you know, from a 30,000-foot view before we get into the specifics. I fundamentally reject any idea that we are like over-budgeting or wasteful. I'm sorry. We deliver the sixth best high school in the state by spending the least amount per student of any district in Cumberland County. If that makes us wasteful, I don't understand your logic there. I think for the past 10 years that I've been on the board, we have fundamentally delivered amazing results and bang for the buck. Anybody who argues that, I think they're not paying attention. I, I think they're disingenuous. So that, I'm just, that's all what I'm saying. You know, all my comments are viewed through that lens. By the same token, we had this situation with the bus drivers two years ago. On some level, it is irresponsible to budget for positions that we don't believe that we can hire. Right? So if you try to hire this position for three years and you can't hire for that position, it's time to stop budgeting for it. I think that's only fair. I personally think David should get half of the percentage that we saved on the borrowing. I think that's only fair, right, David? That should go into your pocket, I think. But otherwise, I support, you know, that reduction. I don't think there's anybody who doesn't support the reductions we find when we sift through even further. But, you know, I think we do have to consider Misty's suggestion that, you know, when you lose by 19 votes, it's not exactly an imperative that you just go back to the drawing board, right? We didn't lose 60-40. We've passed, Gary says he hasn't, doesn't remember a loss, so we've passed 17 or 18 budgets in a row. I just think it's really hard to characterize us as irresponsible or not knowing what we're doing, right? So I think it's possible for us to tell our story better. It's possible that some people, you know, I was playing golf with Mark Wilson the other day, and he admitted that he was unable to vote, and I know that he is a, you know, voting citizen. Hi, Mark, I beat you in golf and now you also owe me, I don't know, some amount of money for not voting for my budget. I think there are a variety of people out there who took for granted that, of course, we pass a budget, that's what we do in New Gloucester. And now they've had a little bit of an awakening. I, I hope this is an awakening for them. I despair that they even know what happened, to tell you the truth. I think we have an information deficit. I think there are many, many, many people in the town of Gray who have no idea what happened with our budget.
Agreed.
And I think it gets to even larger goals that we have with our strategic plans surrounding communication and getting much deeper into the community. And so, you know, 50,000 viewed 100,000 foot view, we have lost some fundamental piece of trust and cooperation with our community members when we are delivering the results that I know to be true and we are having a majority, maybe a small majority, but a majority of people come out and say, no, you've done a bad job, go do something else. So I agree that, you know, if we can cut $350,000 budget relatively painlessly, of course, we're going to do that, right? I don't think there's anybody who's like, oh, no, we got to waste that money, I want the kayak club. But I want us to resist this idea that we did a bad job, right? Of course, when you go and throw, you know, a bunch of six-figure administrators at a problem, they're going to go find a couple more shekels, right? That's going to happen, but there is a cost to that too, right? What, what could Chanda have been doing for this past two weeks? What could David have been doing for these past two weeks? What could Jen have been doing for these past two weeks? These are incredibly valuable people whose labor is incredibly valuable, and we have just squandered huge amounts of it over 19 votes, right? So I like to think, what is the opportunity cost of going back and finding that little $350,000 in a $35 million budget, right? Let's all think about, what is the opportunity cost of forcing people to come out and vote again? Right? What's it cost, $10,000, $15,000 per election, something like that? Apparently, we're not worried about saving that, right? And let's think about how completely and totally intellectually dishonest it is to talk about a 0% increase for a $35 million budget when you're employing 300 people. If you think that we can deliver a 0% increase, you are living in fantasy land. It's not a thing that can happen. Your health insurance didn't go zero. Nothing in your life went up by 0% this year. And to come at us with this should have been a 0% budget, I'm not going to listen to that. Just not going to do it.
Thank you for being so eloquent, Sam, in saying what I meant to say. Hunter?
I'm happy to see the start in the decrease. So so far, we're at that 4.36% with what I feel comfortable with. I also, in fact, do not support a hiring freeze or eliminating positions. I think that would be a lot worse for us. I would like to see maybe, you know, our average is a 3.92% increase in the budget for the last several years. That's the average. I'd like to maybe see us get a little bit closer to that. I think that'd be a little bit more comfortable, you know, if that's the average that has passed and like Sam is saying, hasn't failed in 17 or 18 tries with that increase. I think I personally feel a little bit more comfortable because, you know, I would like to employ, you know, finding as much as we possibly can now, or else if it fails again, we're just going to do this all over again. And I, at that point, think we're, as a board, are wasting our resources when we could be focusing on more important issues. I would also like to see, you know, the ed techs year over year, maybe the last three to five years, how many have we kind of had unfilled and kind of look at that and see maybe or not, there might be some we could remove from there? Because if, you know, the number, if the report comes back that we, per se, carrying 10 unfilled positions for the last five years, well, maybe we can cut just a little bit more because, you know, it makes no sense to keep carrying that 10, 10 unfilled. That's just a number, I'm not entirely sure that's the number. But, you know, I just want to know, what percent do we feel comfortable with passing? And, you know, I would like to see us maybe, as the finance committee finds, maybe a little bit more. Because I would honestly feel comfortable under 4%, since that's about our average. That's about it.
Sharon?
I just, as an alum that attended this school, the budget didn't pass for a long, long time. I don't actually ever remember it passing the first time I went. So I'm going to reach out to those who did attend the school and still have kids in the district. We do know what it's like. Our school was definitely not number six in the state when it failed all the time. This is when we need the support, this is when we need to get out and vote.
Anyone else want a second, second go around?
I have one comment.
Sure.
When the budget passed by nine votes last year, that should have been, you know, a handwriting on the wall, that, you know, people were not supporting it 100%. We should have sharpened our pencil a little more. So this year, when it failed again by more than it won by last year, now, these numbers are so small, it's not even, you know, worth discussing, except for the fact that that's what happened. And so, you know, we, I think Hunter's point is well taken. We, we could find others without hitting the staff and stuff like that. I, I, I believe that, so anyway, that's all I had to say.
Misty, anything, Gary?
But I also want to remind you that over the past 10 years, we've only gone up 3%. So we are keeping low during COVID 2021, we had a very low impact. We didn't want the taxes to be impacted by our, our constituency, the public because we knew we were going through tough times. We did very well back then and being mindful. I feel like we're still very mindful. Over a 10-year period, we are at that number, below that number that Hunter is looking for. And I think that over the past couple of years, we've been making cuts like to facilities when we shouldn't have been. So I'm so glad we're putting money back into that this year. And it's like, you're neglecting your home for five years, guess what? Those repairs don't go away. And that just means they cost more the next time by neglecting them. So we have to keep in mind that, yes, we've had made some cuts over the past couple of years, but now it's time to make those repairs.
Just clarity sake, when you look at our average over the last 10 or however many years, if you throw out a couple of outliers, COVID year where the percentage was almost zero, and then 10 years ago about, when we had contract freezes and contingent, and state curtailments, so we had to cut money, we were at a 0% also. So you've got two years out of 10 that were zero. That'll, that won't be repeated without a pandemic. I mean, that's what allowed that to happen. So if you actually average the eight years, or however many you want to go back, it's way higher than three and a half on average. That average is affected by those two years that were at zero. Just for clarity.
Sam?
And one other thing is, I really think the finance committee needs to dig into the revenue side, which we, you know, I really think fundamentally, the criticisms of the budget were revenue-related, but they were sort of talking about them as expense-related. And, you know, if we have money left over, we need to make sure we're telling the story of how we are rolling that from the general fund back into the tax abatement, perhaps in a better way, because, you know, you didn't spend $500,000 last year, therefore, we should cut it this year, just doesn't work. You didn't spend $500,000 last year, why are we not getting that back rolled over? Or where is it? That's, I think, the story we need to tell.
Anything else? Anyone want to revisit the, we've, we've asked our questions, we've made our passionate speeches, we know we're going to send this to finance. Any last things that people want to encourage finance committee to take a look at? Who are not on finance committee? Also, folks are welcome to attend. You know, you're members of the board, if there's a committee that's of interest to you, you can come. You can't vote on it, you sort of ride it, the middle ground between being on it and being a member of the public, but those meetings are open. Yeah?
As a person that was on the finance committee, that I know that, I can assure you that those discussions throughout of having the budget barely pass last year, that was a message to us and something that while we were developing the budget this year, always have in mind, what's, what is going to be capable of being passed? So I would say that our administration did have that in mind and we did challenge them. So I would like to, I appreciate Sharon, you know, saying we need to get more people out there to vote. So, and find where there is the, or demonstrate that value of our education system that, that this school district is delivering. Thank you.
I have one thing. This room was very comfortable tonight. I came in expecting that I was going to be, you know, oh my God, you know, overwhelmed with heat. So I, I thank you for this comfortable setup.
Thank you for sharing, we are trying to decide what to do.
This is a good place to meet instead of the library. But anyway.
All right. Let's adjourn and send it to finance.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.